Good to go.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Conference of August 11th, 2020. We have three items on tonight's agenda, and the first one is a discussion of the draft guideline policies from the Economic Development Advisory Board, or EDAB, regarding recommendations for the expenditure of the $5 million economic development and recovery program bond issue. For more explanation on that, I would like to recognize City Manager Pyle.
Good afternoon, Your Honor. We have an opportunity to do a screen share, so anybody viewing will be able to see the document in its current draft form. This is a document that was assembled through the participation of the Norman Economic Development Advisory Board, based on the initial guidelines that were proposed by the City Council. So our opportunity to go through the document, take notes on council's comments, and then agendize for your final adoption these program guidelines on our next regularly scheduled council meeting. So just some of the notes from our Economic Development Advisory Board. They did recognize and ask that staff continue to pursue all available funding sources for this particular effort, primarily looking at CARES Act dollars distributed to the state governments and distributed to different federal agencies. So we are working cooperatively with the Commissioners of Cleveland County in our pursuit of CARES Act dollars through the Federal Economic Development Administration administered out of the Austin, Texas office, and we are in a regular conversation pursuing funding to help us solve this need through the Governor's Office. So with all possible approaches, we did want to put together some program guidelines so the community would know what to expect. Looking at this particular ballot. So eligible entities to apply for the dollars out of the Small Business Recovery Package would be locally owned and locally managed organizations. And we said organizations as opposed to business in that there could be nonprofits that may not be recognized as a true business, but may need some assistance to stay in operation here in Norman. Any entity not specifically listed as ineligible below may apply for these funds. And small business defined by this group were businesses or organizations with 50 or fewer full-time equivalent employees. Where applicable, organizations must be current on all of their licenses and fees that are due to the city of Norman, but if they have fallen delinquent due to that COVID-19 pandemic, these funds could be used to help bring them current on all of their past due amounts and use the balance for other business-related activities. Organizations engaged in activities deemed illegal in the state of Oklahoma would be eligible to apply, and existing organizations must have been in operation prior to March 13th of 2020. Organizations that were not in operation on that date would be considered a startup organization and maybe eligible for funding under another specific program listed below. Ineligible entities and organizations, churches or religious organizations, public or private schools, governmental entities or elected officials or elected official offices, financial institutions primarily engaged in lending business, organizations that are primarily engaged in political or lobbying activities, organizations with outstanding business-related liens, judgments, tax liens, or bankruptcies preceding March 13th of 2020. In the priority of considerations, council's guidance, minority-owned businesses would...
Carol, do you have a question?
Yes.
Presentation for questions, or do you want us to drop in while you're talking about them?
Your pleasure. Happy to address them as they come up, and we'll make notes and make sure that your final comments are included in the document that you'll see on your next agenda, so please fire away.
Well, I do have a question. Can you explain what the impetus is for requiring that businesses not have any, or what you mean by outhanding business-related judgment, tax lien proceedings? What I would hate to do is unfairly penalize a business that had gone through bankruptcy a year or two or five ago and shut the door on access to these funds because of that kind of a past history.
You know, of all of the words, and I mean individual words that we drilled down and went over in grueling detail to make sure everybody understood the meaning, that particular line, I don't know how much time we spent other than, would loan proceeds just be immediately taken by some other governmental entity to satisfy liens? If that is a use that council believes is a valid use to keep that business operational, that is something that could be added in that final document that you would not be ineligible just because of those tax liens or judgments. You probably just want to make sure you still had a viable business after those liens or judgments were paid in full, so that you're not just paying off liens to a business that's going to disappear anyway.
Right. Now, I'm more concerned with businesses that may have experienced financial hardship at some point in the past and are not right now, except for COVID. You know, so if I, you know, one of my businesses filed for bankruptcy five years ago, but you know, now, other than COVID, we're doing okay, would this bullet point in here therefore make that company ineligible for this loan or grant?
Understood. And what we can do, the EDAB board will be meeting, I believe, again Thursday morning to finalize council's comments tonight, and I think we can add clarification to this particular line item, just to identify that the goal is to make sure you're not, you know, throwing money at a business that's already deemed closed or no longer viable. We want to keep them viable, and this may be the mechanism to help them stay viable.
Right. To me, one word would be pending bankruptcy proceedings. That prior bankruptcy proceedings, you know, would be okay, but pending bankruptcy proceedings, to me, would be the most concerning part.
Understood.
Off-tax liens or business-related liens, but if someone's had a bankruptcy in the past, I don't want that to then make them ineligible for assistance now.
Absolutely understood. And current claims by others would make an application ineligible, historic bankruptcies or other past credit issues would not be a cause for ineligibility, and we will clarify that in the final draft that comes before the council at the next regularly scheduled meeting. So thank you, Your Honor, and we're glad you're seeing those things, because those are the same questions the public will have too, and this is our opportunity to make sure this is as accessible as any of the other programs, and hopefully more so for those small businesses that may have fallen through the cracks.
Great. Well, I appreciate that. I will be jumping in in the future when we get to those parts, so thank you for that.
So priority considerations for minority-owned entities or organizations that were restricted or had restrictions on capacity during the City of Norman Health Here at Home Plan or future local ordinance impacts to keep everyone safe. Priority given to organizations located in lower income census blocks, and this can be identified in a definition that council can add, what percentage below the median income, and we'll have maps attached to identify what census blocks would be eligible for additional points in the consideration of the loans. Organizations that were not eligible or were denied other sources of funds, maybe they did not receive, for whatever reason, payroll protection or other small business lending funds, and that would add value to the score in being considered for these dollars. Highest priority would be given to entities that demonstrate the greatest negative financial impact related to businesses resulting from COVID-19, so that with all the applications being weighed, if somebody lost 10% of their business due to the pandemic and another entity lost 80% of their business due to the pandemic, the entity that lost 80% would receive more favorable consideration in the weighting of those applications.
City Manager Pyle, Councilmember Bearman has a question.
Please.
So I kind of was, I watched the EDAB meeting from yesterday, and so I saw the discussion around this highest priority given to the greatest negative financial impact, and I don't disagree with that, I'm just struggling with the wording, so that it doesn't completely supersede the priority. You know, because we, council spoke pretty clearly that we wanted minority-owned, you know, businesses owned by minority groups or those in marginalized communities to have priority consideration as well, and what I don't want is to have this last bullet point that simply the greatest negative financial impact is going to jump those applications above and beyond those who were not eligible or denied sources of other funding or are owned by someone in a marginalized community or are located in these lower-income census block groups. So I don't necessarily have the wording that I would prefer, but I am just concerned that when we say something like highest priority given to the greatest negative financial impact, that that money is then going to be sucked up by, you know, 20 businesses that then want $250,000 and not ensure that some of these other priority considerations are taken into account. So do we have an idea of how that would be structured? Because that is a concern that, you know, just...
Yes, no, we understand that. That scoring criteria, if each one of these categories is weighted, that basically a matrix of all of the points earned by applicant, so they may receive priority consideration through several of those line items and wind up, you know, if they're weighted at 10 points each, you could, you know, potentially earn points in each one of those categories, and then we could potentially identify how the greatest negative impact is still worth 10 points and somebody else's negative impact was smaller, they would, you know, get something less than 10 points in that one particular line item. So, yeah, I think it would be the accumulation of negative impacts on that application as demonstrated by the applicant to just help those that meet the most criteria rise to the top.
Well, yeah, and I think what I would love to see is highest priority of these priority considerations, so that, you know, you get points for all of these different priority considerations, and if you are, then also, you know, have a more significant negative financial impact than others that maybe don't meet any of these other priority considerations except for that one. You know, so I don't know, I'm probably not explaining it as well as...
Your...
On top of these, or maybe that these priority considerations, those will be given highest priority if they also then have, you know, the greatest negative financial impact. I don't know, I'm just worried that this is going to end up, that that last bullet point is going to end up weighting more applications higher than some of these other priority considerations.
So, Your Honor, this is the perfect scenario where a picture may be worth 1,000 words, and the ability to provide a copy as an addendum to the action council will take, will be a copy of that scoring criteria that could be amended and tweaked as part of the adoption process, so we will make sure that's included, we'll develop that and finalize the proposal, including that picture at Thursday's EDAB meeting.
Okay, great, appreciate it.
Proposed funding programs, and in initial conversations, the opportunity to develop a portion of the funds set up in a revolving program, so that as loan proceeds are repaid to the pool, we would potentially always have on hand dollars to address the next pandemic or major weather event or emergency, as it may present itself. We were, I think pleasantly surprised at the speed at which Oklahoma City could jump in assistance role because they had dollars on hand. So, you know, the first conversation in terms of how much of the $5 million package would be established for revolving loans for existing organizations with 50 or fewer employees, you know, potentially, that's just to start the conversation, maybe that's a $3 million element of the five, and another million for the nonprofits and smaller businesses with 10 or fewer employees, and maybe that second tranche, the second, the million dollars would be at 0% interest with loans up to $100,000. And these were different criteria, trying to make sure not everybody had to compete for every dollar in every category, but to try to provide businesses with the opportunity to say, well, I don't really need, you know, that first program, and actually, my business is small enough, I've got five or six employees, so I'd rather compete in that second million-dollar program as opposed to looking at the larger revolving loan program. And then we thought, as part of the discussion, maybe 500,000 each for the We Love Norman Recovery Grant programs with, you know, employees of five or less, and micro grants of up to $10,000, with a technical assistance or training program of 500,000. In that, we thought about technical assistance and training to help businesses who may have had a great business model in a pre-COVID environment, and they're really struggling just to make the conversion, to make their business more remote, capable, or friendly, and maybe help develop an online presence so they can continue to compete. And that was the ideology behind that fourth category of the technical assistance and training program. So we tried to put in something for everyone.
Can I jump in with a few questions real quick?
Please.
Thank you. So, okay. Back under the organizations, to pick up nonprofits, and then it said ineligible, and it went through, I'm kind of, I'm having trouble with my granicus, I have been for several days, it's driving me crazy, so I can't follow along and scroll through and go back on my own in tandem. So if you would mind scrolling back, there were ineligible, and then it said, you know, a different list of those.
Yes.
I agree with, okay, I understand, thank you. Organizations that are primarily engaged in political or lobbying activities. So I, too, watched the meeting with EDAB. I don't think that it's really appropriate for them to be engaging in any lobbying activities with public dollars, like a public program going to a nonprofit that, no matter what the percentage is, if they're engaging in any lobbying, that's not an appropriate use of taxpayer dollars, in my opinion. So I would take out primarily and leave it, you know, the organizations that are engaged in any political or lobbying activities.
Understood.
If council's going to put this together, it seems really self-serving to, how would we know whether they... I don't want it to look like we're approving some sort of business loan that we're expecting to reap some benefit, or just the opposite. I don't think that it's going forward, because hopefully this thing's still alive in several years from now, that it's used to, if someone's tax dollars are used to prop up candidates or causes that they don't agree with. Anyone else feel like that?
I'll second that.
I agree as well.
That's a quick fix for us. We're actually making those adjustments right here on paper, so these final comments will be sitting in front of EDAB for their Thursday meeting, but easy fix, thank you, that's a great catch.
Thank you. And then, so, on the greatest negative financial impact, I also thought it might be something that we want to consider about where our community needs that have been identified from COVID lie. For instance, we know now that childcare maybe, or learning, you know, a place with Wi-Fi that kids can get tutoring or whatever, those kinds of businesses where we know that there's going to be serious need. They may not have a huge negative financial impact to boost them up from prior years or whatever, they may not have been super profitable in the past, but we need more of them, so maybe there could be a caveat in there that if there, you know, that there be priority also given to specific identified needs from COVID for the community.
So almost the other side of the coin in that, and this was a conversation that was completely different two weeks ago, not knowing where Norman Public Schools would wind up, and now recognizing that that need for those types of childcare facilities could be in huge demand, and the market is not prepared to absorb that new...
And tutoring.
Yeah, so maybe even you'd be eligible to expand into those markets that have increased as a result of the pandemic.
Yes, and I mean, just all of the services that we take for granted that aren't necessarily school services, but have been pushed off onto the schools, we know now in the last five months that those are areas that our community is going to need to, us as a city council and other public bodies are going to need to step in and start trying to figure out those answers. So maybe this is an area that we can say identified needs from COVID. And then... I would like to see, but before, next time, what the breakdown is on how many companies have 50 or, like, 50 or fewer, 10 or fewer, are those numbers arbitrary, or were they, you know, is there a pie chart that shows this many? Because it seems to me for 50 or fewer that it's really on the higher end, I would be surprised that most aren't much less than that, you know, 20 or fewer employees.
We may have access to that type of demographic information. We'll touch base with the Chamber and with Visit Norman. They have some great databases that we could draw upon, and I think we've been looking at some other agencies that have established recovery programs and kind of following their lead about where they drew the line. 50 or fewer, agreed, that number could be, it could be 40, it could be 25. So that's not a magic number, that was the number that we, you know, had looked at and seen some other programs kind of fall in that capacity, but it can be anything that council feels is most appropriate.
Okay, and then one other stipulation on that is, I would say that it can't be a chain, like, you know, you don't have different LLCs falling underneath one umbrella, and oh, well, we don't, you know, we have 10 in this one and 10 in that one, and whatever, but they're really a chain.
For the employee count.
Okay, and I have questions later, but you haven't gotten there yet, so thank you.
Thank you.
Oh wait, I do, these last four, just so I understand, the funding programs, was it, what was the total breakdown of the 5 million for each category?
So the initial conversation, 3 million in the revolving loan program, 1 million for the small business nonprofit recovery loan program, 500,000 for the We Love Norman Recovery Grant, and 500,000 for the technical assistance or training program, and that's just one possible allocation method, and council can spread those dollars any way they see most advantageous to the community.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Bearman.
So I have some thoughts about these different options as well. I am not really comfortable going as high as $250,000, nor am I really comfortable with $100,000. We have a very limited amount of money to work with here, and as we've seen both with the interest in even the CDBG Rent and Utilities Assistance Program, this money's going to go fast, and it's going to go, it's not going to go very far if we have such a high threshold. You know, I think it seemed like it was a unanimous across-the-board desire of council to be supporting the smallest of businesses, the ones with the least amount of assets, and the ones with the least amount of options available to them. And it concerns me that this program seems to be shifting higher and higher and towards businesses that need a lot more and therefore may have other options or assets that they can lean on in a time like this. So I was far more comfortable with 50, 10, and 5. I'm okay with the grants going up to 10, but I would really like to see these limits a lot lower and so that it is most encouraging to the smallest of businesses. You know, I heard some, you know, conversation at the, you know, at the EDAB meeting about people involved in real estate who may have multiple homes that they are not getting, that they may or may not be getting rent for, and while I am sympathetic to those concerns, those property owners still have assets that they can utilize, maybe in a way that they don't necessarily like, and it wouldn't be their preference, that they have other options because they have more valuable assets. And so I would really like to see this program aimed at the smallest companies here in Norman, the companies that really do provide the engine that makes our city run, and the ones who have most often been left out of the federal programs for a variety of reasons. And I know that Armstrong is very aware about that need in our community, because I have referred several businesses directly to our banker, because they had no, these businesses had no idea how to access these programs through their institutions, because their institutions were not focused on them or didn't have access to these programs or simply weren't responsive to them. So I really would like to see these numbers brought way back down to really keep in mind that who we're aiming for here are the ones that don't have options and don't have a whole lot of assets to their business name.
If there is council consensus on the revolving loan upper end, the small business nonprofit recovery loan upper end, and then the grant programs, we're happy to plug those in, and that'll be the document that comes back to you at the next meeting. So the current range identified by EDAB for the revolving loan for existing organizations with 50 or fewer is currently up to 250,000, and council, if there is consensus, that number can be any number you wish.
I think I'd like to see options, but, you know, a true engine of our local economy are jobs for people. And so if an organization creates 50 jobs and needs $250,000, I'd be fine with that. So maybe, I mean, up to totally gives options. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but I understand Councilor Bearman's point. But, I mean, again, I'm here for supporting jobs as much as I am supporting the businesses, and to support the jobs, you have to support the business.
Any other comments on that value limit?
Yeah.
This actually wasn't related to that, but I do have a thought. Is there any way you could put a cap on the number of entities that qualify for that? Maybe cap it at two or three, or even one?
I would say absolutely that we would, you know, issue up to X number of loans at a maximum threshold of 250, so yes, that could be broken down in greater detail, and so you could spread those dollars farther, but still provide an opportunity for maybe a company with 45 or 50 employees where the payroll protection money may not have lasted near long enough to get them through the end of their current situation. So yes, that could be tiered and capped at the number in each dollar range potentially. And something, honestly, when the application period begins, the opportunity to say, council, we have fully subscribed the large dollar amounts, and we have not had enough applications for anything smaller, you could move that line after the application period was open for, you know, a handful of weeks, and if there were dollars still left to be distributed in one of the other programs, you would have the flexibility to move money in between programs, too.
Yeah, I think that's the key takeaway. I mean, I agree with what both Councilmember Bearman and Mayor Clark said, but I hate to shut the door on it, I'd like to leave ourselves some flexibility, so we don't back ourselves into a corner on this one.
So happy to engage with EDAB and build in that kind of flexibility to provide council, yeah, because we really don't know what the appetite will be until the process begins. So the opportunity to make adjustments to that, you know, in the first month of the application periods, I think probably adds value.
Um, oh, sorry, okay, so we're just, oops, I'm waiting my turn.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, two questions. One, well, this conversation of the 250,000 actually led me to, I guess, do we know how it's going to be determined as to the viability? me to, I guess, do we know how it's going to be determined as to the viability of a request, not just based on the, you know, the 50 employees or the whatever? Is there a revenue stream requirement as well? Like, five years of documentation that they've been performing at such a level? And this was directly COVID-related? I mean, how are we going to do that? Or is that going to be left to the managing organ, is there going to be a managing organization?
So we did have conversations about potentially putting together an underwriting review panel that may include some of our local, local business professionals against that exact criteria. When we're talking about revolving loans, even if it's at a very competitive interest rate, the ability to look at the balance sheet and income statements and determine that, yes, with this assistance, this business will be in a position to repay that debt over time so that those dollars will be available to make the next loan. So yes, underwriting criteria looked at by folks that are currently, you know, in, in the business of making those determinations, but recognizing these are the businesses that have fallen between the cracks. So in a separate proposal to identify what that application document actually looks like and what that underwriting will have to bring you a proposal for loan facilitation. And, you know, where do you make your payments? And how is the interest rate calculated, et cetera?
Whoa, did you fall in a hole? What happened? But I had another question back on the local ownership. Okay. Thank you for that answer, by the way. Underwriting review panel. And then I would, on the topic of underwriting review panel, I want to make it not too intense and, but not too lenient, which I guess is what everybody wants. But back to the ownership, what are the parameters for locally owned? Like, I think
Locally owned and locally managed organizations. We did go into some pretty deep discussion about, you know, how do we define what local business means? I'm trying to recall off the top of my head how, we circled back to this particular definition of locally owned and locally managed organizations. You may have employees that, you know, maybe some of your workforce does live out of town, but their job is at the business address here in Norman. And to support the jobs and the job recovery aspects of those small businesses, it seemed to be the, you know, primary focus of the jobs that are preserved are preserved at the locations here in Norman. And you don't have a presence here. And, you know, the money winds up disappearing and moving somewhere else in the metro area.
So yeah, that would be my caveat that the money would need to stay in Norman. So I would think that if that business, and then this kind of folds into your underwriting review panel for the 250,000 or whatever loan, is what are we doing with, I mean, I'm assuming there will be that, that underwriting review panel, the professionals that get involved on that side of it will have a default process. But I guess let's fold into there somehow a contract that says that, that company either has to stay in business here at the level that they're doing or pay back the loan. Does that make sense?
Absolutely makes sense. The concept of, you know, if you, if you opt to close up shop early, all of a sudden we accelerate the repayment. Or if you sell your business, we need to be, you know, part of that escrow and get that loan rate paid before you disappear.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Holman, that's next, I believe.
Okay. I like a lot of what I've heard from everyone so far. I would be okay with reducing the number for the revolving loan down to maybe 100 or 125. It could go up to 250, but there had to be some sort of other consideration. I don't know exactly what that would be. Small business, maybe that 50. Mainly, I'd kind of like to see some different options for what we could consider as far as that goes. But I kind of agree with wanting to make sure that the bulk of money is not going to, you know, a dozen larger businesses. I do agree that larger businesses can be locally owned and can create a lot of employees. You know, there's some grocery stores in town that are locally owned and probably employ around 50 people, I would say. So I'd like for there to be an option there to, you know, to work with. But I also agree that a lot of the bigger businesses too might have had more opportunities to get funding other ways. And so we really, I think the intent of this program is to look out for our smallest and most vulnerable businesses in town that really had no other options. So I would like to see an emphasis on that specifically. And then see some options on some different caps perhaps, or if there's an option to go above that has to go through some sort of other check.
Additional criteria.
Yes. So, but yeah, that's kind of my thoughts. I'd agree with my colleagues on here. So I'd like to see, see some of these changes and then see where we're at then.
Councilmember Petrow.
Okay, on that note, I would be interested to see something like a phase one, phase two, maybe, this revolving program. I just, I'm hesitant that on 250,000, that's 12 companies and it could be done. And I don't think that's what any of us want. I think we're more wanting it to be, how many people can we get back on, on the employees can we serve, but also small businesses and keep those, get those families back on payroll. So it maybe if we could do something like a phase one is, you know, up to a much lower threshold that most small businesses probably wouldn't even hit. So like up to 100,000 maybe? And even still, they're probably not going to hit that. And then I needed to have some, and then maybe phase two, once we get down the road, that we need more asset-heavy companies that could potentially be asking for 250,000. Let's get the smaller ones served first and then see where we're at. So maybe we'd say up to 250, but that particular program doesn't start for 180 days or something like that.
To have round one with one criteria to help the smaller guys, and then round two, after the application period begins to see a slowing appetite for new loans, perfect opportunity. You don't even necessarily need to set that date in advance. We could report back when it looks like we've seen most of the subscription demand on the smaller piece and then bring that back for a council action to go ahead and initiate round two.
Yeah, maybe that would be good to come back to council before we did round two with a larger amount attached to it. And also see kind of what the pandemic and what the federal government has done at that point. And then I need to understand, you mentioned CARES money or PPP money. Am I, is this for people that they didn't receive one single, what I thought of is that they didn't qualify at all? Not that they were underserved by PPP, but that they didn't get PPP money? So what it
It would get the highest priority.
Right. But would it kick out your application if you've received PPP dollars?
You would not score as favorably. So you may not receive funding in the first round potentially. And if the appetite is large enough for entities that were not able to receive any other funds, there may not be any money left in the pot if you did successfully obtain payroll protection or some other small business assistance. So we would want to support those who receive no assistance, at least through the first round.
That's what I would hope too. And I hope that that would be clear. Like, you know, one of the first questions asked after, you know, a marginalized company or marginalized community would be, you know, did you receive or have you applied for federal dollars through any of the programs? And if so, did you receive any? And if they did, then if their company did, then I don't see, like, you've already gotten something from tax money. We need to try to, we're trying to get to the people that we know. And there are a lot that didn't. So I would hope that this isn't just about supplementing the PPP. It would be more about they didn't get served through that. They didn't
Understood.
And then, oh, on the, that one as well, the revolving loan for existing organizations with 50 or less. Again, I'm uncomfortable with the 50, but the existing, I think this might be where we could have a caveat of, or startups that are answering particular needs that have been identified via COVID or due to current circumstances or whatever. That way we can extend some startup money, not 250,000, but to get some of these people to be able to hang out their shingle and start tutoring kids or keeping kids or doing whatever it is that they can, you know, stand in that gap.
Understood.
Councilmember Peacock, did you have your hand raised?
I did earlier, but I'll come back to what I was thinking. In regards to this Technical Assistance and Training Program, has there been a partnership with Moore Norman Technology Center that's been explored to, you know, offer maybe matching skills, training hours in addition to the ones that we are going to be reimbursing people for through this program?
Yeah, our goal is to not start necessarily new programs and provide the training with his existing city staff, but look towards our business community and find those experts locally and potentially put on those training programs. And if we can get multiple small business training sessions all together, it really make those dollars go a lot farther. And we know, you know, that the Chamber has seen some success and with their membership recognizing how rapidly some of those businesses have been able to migrate into a virtual business model and succeed. And the ability to help share that knowledge just will allow us to facilitate the sharing of local knowledge and expertise.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
Yeah, I just had a couple other things about along these lines, under that Technical Assistance Training Programs. So I thought, I don't know if there was some way we could set aside 50,000, I don't know, as two more Norman Technology Center as like individual thousand-dollar loans for people to go to Moore Norman Tech Center. Not necessarily business owners, but people that have lost their jobs to go get some sort of new job training, perhaps in a trade at Moore Norman. That's just one idea I've heard about that I thought was there out there. We might consider sort of like a scholarship, city-sponsored scholarship to
I think that would be an excellent opportunity. Some, some folks, the business skills they had may not be applicable in the post-COVID economy. And we could have that conversation with folks at Moore Norman to say, tell us, you know, a typical program and do it as a scholarship, as a grant. And that, that could easily come from, if council thinks that the 500,000 allocation to the Technical Assistance Training Program is the place to start, to say you could do 50,000, set up 4,000-dollar grants and really see what kind of impact you have. If the demand is greater, council could adjust those numbers and add more to the program. And if the appetite doesn't consume all 50,000, you could move it right back into the program, spend it in other areas.
Yeah, I think that would be a good way to help individuals that may not be business owners but are employees and have, yeah, are looking to do something like that. And, you know, the city would still approve the request and then we send a check to Moore Norman. I'm not sure how that works, but anyway. And then the highest priority one, I just want to go ahead and mention that one. I thought, I agree with Councilmember Bearman, I think having the first four bullets and saying, you meet all of those criteria, then the highest priority would be given to the one that needs it most, you know, in the most financially dire situation or whatever that above credit criteria was. So something along those lines, though, I would definitely agree that I wouldn't want it to just default to whoever, whoever's got a bigger company and so they can show on paper, hey, I, I need
Biggest loss.
Yeah, you know, so because I have a bigger company overall. And so I can get it, again, a big, there could be a locally owned company that is big enough to need this, for sure. It may not be an estate chain or anything. But again, I do, do have that same concern that we want to make sure that the, these funds are going to the businesses that really had no other options, just based on their size or part of town, financial, you know, any, any sort of these criteria. So that's what I have, I appreciate it. With childcare too, I agree with the childcare part too.
Got it. We'll clean that up and add some, add some value for council's consideration at adoption.
Thank you.
Councilmember Foreman.
Mine is just sort of like an off question. I've had a lot of constituents ask me questions about this. And they're wondering if we're going to have public somewhere who we give the funds to, what businesses and how much.
The proceeds would be initially funded through the issuance of a general obligation bond for $5 million to be held in a fund for the administration of that program specifically. And we have Mr. Francisco on the Zoom with us. Mr. Francisco, when it comes to those cash handling procedures, would we anticipate those dollars remain in our custody until all the loans are out? And then just work with a local loan servicing provider to administer the paperwork and the billing and the collection activities?
We could do it either way. We would certainly account for the general obligation bond proceeds separately. But once the program is up and running and we might have this third-party processor, we might make periodic payments to them so that they could make the payments to the individual recipients, be they businesses or individuals. We could do it either way.
But always compliant with the Bond Act here in Oklahoma.
But we wouldn't have like list public anywhere that said who got what?
Like the PPP, I think you should, definitely.
There, there is conversation about what elements of an application would be made public. The thought that you could have a list of all of the loan recipients, maybe without necessarily exposing everybody's balance sheet and income statement to the public. And there's probably a legal question in there somewhere about where, where do you draw the transparency line without deterring people from wanting to apply? So probably a fine line. I do think in some of the federal programs, a list was developed that did identify who the recipients were.
We could at the very least create like a window cling where if you got funds, you put it on your business. So we get a shout out and residents get a shout out for funding this program that's supporting businesses. That'd be a neat way to identify it.
And yeah, get a little PR for the revolving portion so it's ongoing.
Okay, we have a couple more hands raised. We have about eight minutes left. So what I call on you, if we don't get through this, you will be, E-Dab will talk about it on Thursday again. And then it'll be coming back to council in a study session next Tuesday before you see it on an agenda for actual approval. So just to keep that in mind, you can also send any additional comments that don't get made tonight to Daryl and myself to share with E-Dab on Thursday. Councilmember Hall.
Yes, I know time is short, so I just wanted to support so many of the comments that were made already and to just reiterate that I think my focus certainly and I think consensus of council was to really focus on the least of these and those that don't have access to other funds. So I really support staying focused on those entities that have not had access to any other kind of assistance at this point. And as far as the priority considerations, you know, And as far as the priority considerations, you know, we have the first four categories or the four bullet points. And if you just took out the highest priority will be given to and just strike that and have entities that demonstrate. That would give it equal standing to the rest. And then depending on how you do the weighting system, you could take all of that into consideration. That's just a suggestion.
Excellent observation.
Pardon me?
Excellent observation. I think that makes it much clearer.
Yeah, and then, you know, hopefully there'll be a little bit more definition on the weighting system of all of that. But that would make it have equal standing with the four bullet points above. So that might help us out there. And only other comment was I really do like the idea. I was wondering about the startup piece and how that would work. And I really do support the startups that we may be seeing as a result of all of our underlying needs for caring for children in our community. So I absolutely support that too. I also want to make sure we have flexibility, but I do like the idea of the phasing so that the, those that have really are very small and need help get the highest priority and give us the opportunity to go back later for those bigger dollar amounts. So that's all I have to say for now, and thank you for all the work that has been put into this so far.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bierman, final thoughts?
So I have, I have two comments. One is that I firmly support as much transparency as we can put into this program. And I do think that we should be at least listing the business names and the amount that they get on the city's website. This is, these are taxpayer dollars that are being spent. And if a business is at all concerned about that, then, you know, there are not very many places where you can go except to private lending where your information isn't going to be out there somewhere. We saw that with the PPP, we saw that with the EIDL. And a lot of businesses got, got into some hot water for taking money maybe that they didn't need, but that they wanted. And I will certainly never shy away from increasing transparency. And I think that that is the very least that we can do to help regenerate some public trust in this process. So I do support that. And just kind of as we continue to look at ways to structure this, whether it's a tiered system like Councilmember Patron suggested, or this proposal from EDev, I just really want to be sure that we're coming at this, not from the perspective of how do we ensure the most businesses are eligible for this program? But from the perspective of how do we ensure that the smallest and least resourced businesses in our community get what they need out of this taxpayer funded program? And so that's going to be the frame that I look at this from. And I think that that's the frame that the public is going to be looking at this from. And so, you know, and I think that this is going to do a lot to either help or hurt the possibility of this particular proposal passing on the 25th. So I look forward to seeing what EDev comes up with, with this feedback, and we'll see where we go from here.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor?
Does anyone need a break before we dive into the council meeting? All right, let's take a, it's 6:27, let's try and be back right at 6:30 to begin our meeting. Please turn on your cameras and mute your audio. Looks like we're just waiting for Councilmember Foreman. And, oh, she's like, let me eat, woman, I'm sorry. Well, I'll do the talking, you finish chewing, all right? Let us begin so we can stay on schedule for this evening. Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority, meeting of August 11, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Here.
Councilmember Perry?
Here.
Councilmember Patron?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman? Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agendas at the city council by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items four through 20 in the consent docket. The motion on the floor is to place items four through 20 on the consent docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Perry?
Aye.
Councilmember Patron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here, yes.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The consent docket placement is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item four, approval of the city council's special session minutes of March 16, 2020, and the city council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority minutes of July 14, 2020. Item five, ordinance 2021-1 upon first reading to grant special use for one and only one of the specific uses permitted in the M1 restricted industrial district, specifically G medical marijuana processor, any tier except that tier one and tier two will not be allowed to have onsite sales as allowed by state law, and A2 rural agricultural district property located at 3927 12th Avenue Northwest. Item six, ordinance 2021-2 upon first reading, amending the planned unit development established in ordinance 1415-29 to amend signage requirements for Lot 1, Block 1, Legacy Trail Apartments Edition located 2501 Pendleton Drive. Item seven, ordinance 2021-5 upon first reading, adding Article 6 Water and Sanitary Sewer Line Extension or Improvement Approval in sections 21-601 through 21-605 to Chapter 21 Utility Services of the City Code to establish definitions, creating a process for municipal exemption from certain state permits for water line and sanitary sewer line extensions, systems and improvements, and requiring compliance with the Department of Environmental Quality and City of Norman standards. Item eight, mayor's appointment of Caroline Bullworth, Celia Morris Monroe, Aisha Prather, Michael Ridgway and Bobby Stevens to the Ward Five Candidate Selection Committee. Item nine, submission of the Norman Regional Health System Budget for FYE 2021. Item 10, submission of the city manager's change order report. Item 11, bid contract and bonds with Simran Construction Company LLC in the amount of $831,459 for the bridge maintenance project FYE 2020 locations and adoption of a resolution granting tax incentive status. Item 12, easement 2021-1, a permanent sanitary sewer easement donated by Jade Knowles for the Trails Edition, Section 3, Block 1, Lot 9A. Item 13, easement 2021-2, a permanent public utility easement donated by Jade Knowles for the Trails Edition, Section 3, Block 1, Lot 9A. Item 14, declaration of surplus and or obsolete equipment and materials and authorizing the sale thereof. Item 15, amendment number two to contract 60607-37 with Municipal Finance Services Incorporated, removing for Southwest Corporation Top Services as a co-financial advisor from the Financial Services Agreement for the City of Norman. Item 16, changer number two to contract 1819-4 with Central Contracting Services Incorporated, decreasing the contract by $8,671.35 for a revised amount of $433,078.65 for the FYE 2019 concrete sidewalk projects and final acceptance of the project. Item 17, contract 2021-31, an enterprise agreement with Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated to provide software and software maintenance and support for the Enterprise Geographic Information System, GIS, in the amount of $75,000 per year for a period of three years. Item 18, city attorney's recommendation that city council approve a settlement of Josephine Olson versus City of Norman Cleveland County Court Case, CJ 2019-1506, in the amount of $85,000. Item 19, city attorney's recommendation for acceptance of a court order in the amount of $9,240 regarding James Darren Morgan versus the City of Norman Oklahoma Workers Compensation Commission Case, 2019-07496L. Item 20, resolution 2021-24 establishing and declaring the City of Norman's official intent to reimburse the capital fund for preliminary capital expenditures incurred in the design, constructing and equipping of the proposed transit and fire maintenance facility out of a portion of the Series 2020 general obligation bond of the City of Norman. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Oh, moved.
Back in.
All right. The, are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Seeing none, the motion on the, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Perry?
Aye.
Councilmember Patron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The consent docket is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now for the items off consent. Item 21, resolution 2021-23 appropriating $7,000 from state seizure account on the monthly payment of local funds to be used by the Special Investigation Section investigators for FYE 2021. I will entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. I'd like to recognize Chief Foster to make a presentation.
Major Shattuck has it.
Thank you, Chief Foster. Major Shattuck?
Hey, good evening. I hope that we can use this $7,000 to pay for our special investigations fund or our special investigations phones. We have historically used these funds since 2012 from the state seizure fund to pay for the use of these phones. This year, there was a change in the procedure for using the seizure fund, so we have to come for you guys for approval.
Thank you, Major Shattuck. Are there any comments from questions, excuse me, questions, questions from council regarding this item?
Councilmember Holman?
So a couple weeks ago, I'd asked city manager pile if there was 7,000, basically if there was $7,000 anywhere else in the city budget that we could use to pay for this other than this fund. And so I didn't know if city manager pile might have any comments about that.
You bet, Your Honor. In a budget of approximately $280 million, the availability to find $7,000 from another source is absolutely achievable. This had just historically been the source from which these particular phone bills had been paid. But we're happy to follow council's direction. If it is not council's wish to spend seizure dollars in this fashion, we will take it out of other previously appropriated resources.
So I support the expenditure, just not out of this account. I'm committed to not supporting civil asset forfeiture or any expenditures from funds that come from it. So if there is another $7,000 we can identify, I will be happy to support this proposal.
I'm not seeing any other, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bierman?
So she enreaded herself. I was thinking she was going to talk.
I thought, I thought I had already raised my hand, so apologies. I agree with Councilmember Holman. I think if there are other ways to find these funds, I think that is a more appropriate place to find them. And so my question is, how do we then proceed with this particular item? If the funds are not going to come from civil asset forfeiture funds, what is the process for this particular item?
No process is needed other than we've got other budgeted resources. And in that spending limit, staff will handle that acquisition. This item in its current form only comes because the rules for using the state seizure program money just have new rules attached for this particular year. So if council votes not to use these dollars, no further action on council's part is needed. We'll go ahead and complete the phone bill payment from existing resources. So no further action would be required on your part.
None at all? We don't need a motion to withdraw or a motion to postpone definitely or?
Nope, just you can vote on the, on the item on the floor, and if it's unsuccessful, we'll go, we'll go elsewhere.
Okay, so we vote it down so that the money can be found elsewhere? That's what I was thinking at. I was like, do we amend this item? Do we just vote it down? How do we proceed? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Patron?
So, thank you for that information, Mr. Pyle. And I think that I agree that the money should be found without the, from someplace else in the budget. Civil asset forfeiture money is highly charged topic, and I feel like right now, when it comes to discussions even revolving around the police, I don't want to add any more fuel to those flames. And I think that if we were to move forward and use civil asset forfeiture money to pay phone bills, that we're just contributing to that kind of divisiveness in the city. It would be best, and I would encourage everyone to let manager find the money in the budget someplace else, and I really appreciate you getting us that opportunity.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes, I also support locating the funds from another source. I'm happy to hear that we have that option. I definitely support the appropriation of the funds for the use intended, but I would prefer to find it from another category.
Councilmember Wilson?
All those things I absolutely support are police officers having proper equipment in the form of phones. I do not, I've learned through, actually through Stephen Tyler Holman's aggressive stance on this, that the history of it and the way it's administered and managed, I have concerns with it as well. So thank you, Stephen, for always being consistent and for bringing that information to my knowledge base. So I'll be voting no against on this.
Councilmember Foreman, did you change your mind?
Yeah, my question was answered.
Okay. See, seeing no other, one moment. No, I'm seeing no other hands raised, Mayor.
I actually have a question. Major Shattuck, can you please clarify that are these funds that go into the state seizure accounts adjudicated? They're not funds that are just hanging out there that police have taken from suspected individuals? They are in fact convicted?
Yeah, that's correct.
I don't think the state, I don't think the state seizure fund money, not all of those are convictions. It is when you look at federal seizure, not the state seizure, though. All of these are not necessarily convictions.
But it has been through the court system.
Yes, it has been through the court system.
Can you clarify that? What do you mean gone through the court system if it's not a conviction?
There's not a criminal offense that goes with the forfeiture of the funds. It's just a civil action and not a criminal one.
Do you have an example of that?
So if we did a stop on the highway and the individual was carrying a large amount of money that didn't belong to him, and through the investigation, he admitted that it was not his, that money may be seized, but he may not necessarily be charged.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions from council regarding this item?
Sorry, Allison, I got in front of you with my hand. But I just also wanted to clarify that the funds can be adjudicated when the individual is not, and councilmember Holman is a perfect example of that. It took way longer to get the friendly market property back after he was found not guilty. And oftentimes, the cost for the court cost and the legal cost to try and get your property back can be more than the value of the property itself. And so there are individuals who choose not to try and get their property back because the cost of going through that process might be funds that they don't have upfront. It might be funds that there is no guarantee that will be paid back to them, and it might end up costing more than their property is worth. So there is a lot that goes into this issue, which is one reason why we started broaching the topic in oversight, because it's a very complicated process, and it's for all of those reasons, including the very personal experience that one of our council members went through to try and get property back. You know, it's way more complicated than just saying the funds have been adjudicated. So that is one of the many reasons why councilmember Holman has brought me along on this. And yeah, I learned a lot through his case and through many examples that are too numerous to go into here, but it's made me very concerned about our use of these funds. So I'm glad we can find it elsewhere.
Councilmember Petron?
They pretty much said it, and I appreciate Chief Foster piping up and saying that, you know, it doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, that there was a conviction, because there, like oftentimes, there is not. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Chief.
Seeing no other hands raised, Mayor.
All right, thank you for that and all those great questions. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments?
One moment, let me check my email, I'm sorry.
There are none from the YouTube feed, Mayor.
And no emails.
Thank you. All right, seeing no public comment, are there any final comments from council regarding this item?
I would like to know, pardon me, I would like to know if we're not going to use these seized funds, exactly where are we going to get the money? Can Anthony answer that?
More than likely, it'll come from the Police Department General Fund Budget.
Okay, okay, just wanted to know where that was coming from. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman? Any other questions?
Same question, just wanted to, whenever that decision is made, to let council know what, where it is coming from. So, like I said, $7,000 anywhere in the 200 million plus budget, I'm cool with it. Thanks.
Will do.
Councilmember Foreman, did you have something?
I do have a question. What, do we use these funds for anything else right now? Or is it only for cell phones? I mean, what are we, what are we looking for?
We've used it for training, cell phones, primarily, the large part of this is used, it has been in the past for training, large trainings that we send people to for, from three weeks to 11-week trainings. This is where we get those funds from.
Seeing nothing else, Mayor.
All right, seeing no other final comments from council regarding this item, the motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Just reminding you, a yes vote means you are in favor of the resolution. The motion on the floor is to approve. Councilmember Beerman?
No.
Councilmember Perry?
Nay.
Councilmember Petron?
No.
Councilmember Hall?
No.
Councilmember Wilson?
No.
Councilmember Foreman?
No.
Councilmember Holman?
No.
Councilmember Peacock?
No.
Councilmember, or excuse me, Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The motion fails by a vote of eight, or one to eight, excuse me, voting in the affirmative. Mayor Clark?
Thank you. Item 22, resolution 2021-16, adopting and confirming final costs associated with improvements on 12th Avenue Southeast and Artiro Road from 500 feet north of Cedar Lane Road to Oak Tree Avenue, and authorizing the Director of Public Works to release properties as assessments are paid. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to recognize Beth Mukala, Assistant City Attorney, to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I'm getting this set up, I'm slow, I apologize. There we are. Okay, so I am here to finalize a recruitment project that was opened in 2017. Some of you all that were on council then might recall this project. But for those who are new, the recruitment process can be kind of involved, so I wanted to give a brief rundown of exactly what it is and how it relates to development in the city. Chapter 16 of our code sets out some provisions that in large part are based upon state law that's been in place for a long time, and that state law provides that landowners are and can be responsible for the payment for improvements of infrastructure and streets abutting their properties. And so you'll see a lot of development projects come forward where funds are being paid or deferred for current development. Well, if we have, usually, streets are going to follow development a lot, but sometimes there's going to be a few straggling parcels that don't develop as quickly. And so instead of having gaps in the project, we have recruitment, which allows us to do it all at once and to keep track of the costs, so that whenever those parcels later develop that have not already done it, we can recoup those costs. So it's based on the cost of acquiring the land, as well as the construction of the streets and/or infrastructure. And so it relates to Chapter 19 of our code, which addresses development and what exactly that is. And as I just said, when you see some development, especially with plating, a landowner is going to be conveying these easements and rights of way that are necessary in order for infrastructure. And so during the recruitment process, if they haven't already platted, that's when you're going to identify them as a parcel likely subject to recruitment. And so at that time, they will be given the option of donating this, and usually, a lot of parcels that intend to develop do that, they donate, or they can take payment for the acquisition, which is going to be, of course, subject to the recruitment. This project in particular was part of the 2012 bond package, and as you can see on this slide, here are a lot of improvements you've seen before, multimodal infrastructure, continuous sidewalks, intersection improvements, and of course, street widening. Oh, I missed one, stormwater as well, you see that there. And so in this particular project, there was only one parcel, a large parcel on the corner of, well, kind of of South Highway Nine, and actually, a railroad intersection abutting or parallel to Classen. And so in this case, the construction is completed, and we're at the final stages, finalizing those costs. ODOT hasn't gotten us back their figures yet, so what we've actually been able to do is determine that construction costs are not going to exceed the funds that we received or the bond fund. So in that case, we aren't going to be able to recoup any construction costs, and so we know now that our recruitment is going to be limited to the acquisition costs. So in the interest of time, we went ahead and brought this to you now. Here's an aerial of the parcel we're talking about, that one large parcel abutting the railroad and State Highway Nine. And so the recruitment process is opened, and this one was back in 2017, but now the construction is done, we're at kind of step two of closing it, which is bringing the numbers to council. And as you saw in your packets, this is a relatively low acquisition cost that was actually adjudicated, an order was entered in a court action. And so what happens if this is approved is we will file a map and list with the city clerk and with the county clerks, and that will become a potential obligation on the parcel. And I describe it like that because, again, it depends upon this tract developing. If this tract stays exactly as it is, then they will not be subject to this obligation. Our recruitment ordinance further is time limited, and so during the first 15 years that they develop, they would owe 100% of the cost, which in this case is a few thousand dollars. But after that 15-year mark, it starts to reduce by 20%, and by year 20, it's entirely extinguished. So again, they have two different ways where they may not ever have an obligation arise on this tract. But it is filed of record, again, to allow us to move forward with the project and to fund our projects this way. And with that, we recommend the approval of this resolution, and I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item?
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you, I appreciate the presentation, Beth. This is a segment of road in Ward Seven, as was mentioned, as part of the 2012 bond. It was delayed several years from when we thought it would be done due to federal funding, as we've seen on some other projects. And it is fine, it's been complete for two years, it's very nice, but the Madoll family who owns that piece of property, their family has owned that property for a very long time, I should say, way before Highway Nine existed. Highway Nine goes through the middle of their former property, I would just say. And I've spent many hours on the front porch and in the living room of their house, talking to them about things going on, and they don't come to City Hall very often, but they did come the night that we approved the, going forward with this project, and they just said they wanted to be treated fairly. And I think city staff has done a pretty good job of meeting with them throughout the whole process of this project for years, and making sure they know what's going on and that they are being treated fairly. I have not received any phone calls recently from them about this, so I'm assuming that's very good news in regard to this project. And so I don't know if staff has, Sean, or anybody has any comments about discussions with the Madoll family, but they are a very longtime Norman family, have been in that area way before anything else existed as far as neighborhoods and businesses and Highway Nine. So that was really the biggest deal about this project, and I would, one request from a lot of neighbors is that our bike advisory board take a look at the bike lanes and how it interacts with Highway Nine right there. I've had a lot of comments from neighbors about how it is set up. So anyway, that's my comments about that project. Again, if staff has anything to add about the Madoll family, I'd be happy to hear it, but they seem to be satisfied with what we've done.
Councilmember, I might first add and assure you that they received notice that this was going to be placed on the agenda, and they were represented by legal counsel in that action, and so I'm fairly confident that they are perfectly aware of what's happening here. And further, I did previously reference the time limitations of our code, and the reason I actually wanted to bring that up is we had a rare opportunity here to determine that we were limited to acquisition costs without waiting longer for ODOT to get those costs in, so we started that clock running a little faster in this case because of that.
Right, thank you.
I would only add, councilmember, appreciate the summary, you did a great job as always. Would just add to that, that there are several branches of that family, as you know. I think we've gotten to know all the brothers and sisters, they own property on Cedar Lane Road, so this is the second project that we have encountered many branches of the family. We two have sat in their living room and their torches, both in both locations. They're a great group. My son played baseball with one of their grandkids, so we work really well with them, and we, you know, we understand this, all of this development and road construction is happening on their old farmland, and that's difficult to cope with. Many of them are still living there, as I understand, and I think they're pretty happy with the ultimate improvements here.
I appreciate that, Sean, thank you very much.
Seeing no other comments, Mayor.
Thank you. If there are no other comments or questions from council regarding this item, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments?
And from the YouTube feed, Mayor.
Thank you.
No emails either.
All right, this is an opportunity for final comments from council regarding this item. Raise your hand if you have any final comments.
Seeing none.
All right, I'll throw in my final comment. We have touched on the idea of sidewalk recruitment, which is incredibly similar to this process, and all of us have these stretches in all of our wards all around Norman that have no sidewalks, and the answer is, oh, well, we're waiting for that piece of land to develop. And so I think as we go over our council priorities for the upcoming year, this was one for last year, there's a few things that have happened that might have slowed us down in accomplishing some of them. in accomplishing some of our goals, but I'm not going to let that one go away because I think that is really important and a very fair way to make sure our sidewalks are connected, especially in Ward Six, council reforming clearly near and dear to my heart. I have seen motorized wheelchairs far too often in the street in 12th Avenue, which is, you know, a state highway, so we can do better, and this might be the perfect mechanism to help us accomplish that. So with that, the motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Perry?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted unanimously.
Thank you. Item twenty-three, ordinance 2021-6, adding Article Five, creating the position of municipal auditor to be appointed and removed by the city council and renumbering article designations set forth in the charter after Article Five accordingly. It's been reported that the Charter Review Commission is close to finalizing their recommendations, and in the interest of consolidating proposed charter on one ballot, which will save the city money in the long run, I would like to entertain a motion to postpone this item and items twenty-four and twenty-five until October 27, 2020. That date was selected because that is the last time we'll be able to move it back to the November ballot.
January, Mayor.
Yes.
My apologies. So, Councilmember Wilson, you made the motion, was there a second?
Second.
Councilor Petron. All right. Are there any questions from council regarding the postponement? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding the postponement.
None on the YouTube feed, Mayor?
Thank you.
None on the email either?
All right, seeing no public comments regarding this item, are there any final comments from council regarding the postponement?
Seeing, seeing none.
Okay. The motion on the floor is to postpone this item and the subsequent two items until October 27, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Perry?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The motion to postpone to October 27 passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will now go to item twenty-six, Resolution 2021-31, commending and extending appreciation to Sarita Wilson for serving as Ward Five council member. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Don't move.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Perry?
Aye, aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
I mean, I guess, yes.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted unanimously.
All right, and I believe we don't have our usual pomp and circumstance, but Councilmember Wilson, I look forward to getting it, and I will perhaps serenade you from your new home in Ward Four with this resolution with a bottle of champagne. It has been an honor to work with you. I have learned so much from you, and I think you've made this council better, and you've done a hell of a job representing Ward Five, and I've never seen a council member be as consistent in their resident outreach the way that you have been, and you've really set the bar high for whoever has the the honor and challenge to fill your shoes. Are there any other comments?
Mayor Clark, did I, did I not get that pasted in?
It's not, yeah, it's not, and it's not on the agenda either, I just checked my
My apologies.
mail it to me real quick, I'll go for it, we can say our comments.
Okay, my apologies. Ellen will send it to you while we take comments. Councilmember Beerman?
So, as all of you know, Sarita and I are council classmates. We were elected in the same year, and that was the first big thing that we did together. And now it might even be one of the smaller things that we have done together. I still get the honor and the privilege and the pleasure of seeing and speaking with you basically every single day, but I am really going to miss your perspective, your Saritaisms, the general humor that you bring to what can sometimes be, offense to anyone, a fairly stale proceeding. Robert's Rules of Order is not humorous or fun or funny, but you are all of those things. And as I have said several times, when people have asked me about my thoughts on you leaving, I don't, I don't know that anyone can truly appreciate, except maybe this body, the amount of invisible water that you've carried from Ward Five, the hard line on development east of 48, and always being a voice for the people out in East Norman who historically have not been so well represented. And so I, even though I get to see you every day, I'm really going to miss seeing your face every Tuesday, and so, but I know that you're not going to be a stranger and that you're not going to be going away. You might be moving to Ward Four, but that's closer to the action. So I have a feeling that we'll be seeing a lot of you, and I can't wait to tackle this new old house of yours and restore it back to its former glory. So thank you for the time that you've put into this, and we'll try and carry your legacy forward.
Councilmember Petron?
I'm upset with you. You know, Sarita, there's, nobody's going to be able to fill your seat, and that's just the fact of the matter. You have the no-nonsense and comic relief, and just you're consistent with you, your fiscal responsibility, you're constantly looking out for those tax dollars, and you're consistently looking out for Ward Five lands and environment and stormwater issues that don't necessarily affect Ward Five in the same way as they might in town, but you're looking for equitable solutions that are fair to Ward Five. Girl, there's, I don't even know what, that I have the words for it, but I know that I am grateful that I have gotten to know you so well, and even though you're not going to be logging into Zoom every week, we're still going to be able to come see you, and thanks for keeping my dogs at Annie's, and Charlie and Guthrie are much appreciative of the care that they receive there, so I will see you in your places of business, but thank you for your selfless sacrifice for the council and to your community. I don't think people realize how many hours that, of your life that you've given, but it's a lot, and I'm just appreciative of you and for your consistency in looking out for marginalized communities too. So thank you.
Councilmember Hall?
Well, it's hard to even know where to begin, but I so appreciate the fact that our paths have crossed, and I've really interacted with you much more as a constituent of the Norman community than the time that we've shared on council together, and I have found you from our very first meeting to be so engaged and responsive and interested in what is going on in our community, and so appreciated your ability to step outside your ward and listen to concerns that other constituencies had in the Norman community. And I think oddly, we have found over the last couple of years, handserving on council, that we shared a lot of common ground on things of our, of interest and concern in Ward Four and in Ward Five, and it has been such a privilege for me to be able to serve on council with you after building the relationship that we did as a resident of Norman and a neighborhood advocate and responsive council member, so for that, I'm so grateful, and I want to give a host of welcomes to Ward Four. We're going to fit right in because we have so many comments that you are well aware of, so I'm so looking forward to having you in Ward Four and definitely leaning on your expertise and your sense of humor and your ability to keep everything in perspective, and just the email that you have been in representing your ward and in looking out for the Norman community, so so grateful for your service, and I'm so happy that you're going to be a resident of Ward Four.
Councilmember Holman?
Well, I, yeah, I just want to say thank you so much for stepping up and doing this. You can relate a lot to coming from similar things that I've come from in my life, so I've always felt a connection that way between us, and your ward is extremely difficult to represent. It's not hard to tell by just looking at it on a map. You know, I first met you when you were, started coming to Animal Welfare Oversight Committee meetings and demanding that we needed to do better, and I thought, all right, and that's where I met Kate as well, and then little did I know that I would end up serving with both of you on the council and for three years now, and three-plus years, and some things about Ward Five that people may not understand about it is, people think it's just maybe a rural area, people that live out by the lake and have farms, but Ward Five actually has the largest apartment complex in the whole city, at the Links. It has the largest of the three Walmart supercenters. It has the second-largest hotel in the entire state of Oklahoma. It has the largest lake in the entire OKC metro area, and the southern portion of Ward Five touches Noble, and the northern portion almost touches I-40. You know, it's amazing what Norman is like, and I say, well, if you get on Highway nine and you drive 20 miles east, you'll still be in Norman. And they're like, what, are you kidding me? I say, no, it's, Norman is extremely or abnormally large for a city our population, and it's also hard for people to believe that Ward Five is 150 square miles roughly of our 190 square miles, and it has the same population as Ward Four, which is four square miles, you know? I just love that type of stuff, talking to people about it. So there's a lot of different types of people to represent in that area. It is more diverse in different ways than people may give it credit for, and I have felt like Sarita has done a wonderful job of balancing that in a, from a policy standpoint, for sure, and her vote has resulted in literally millions of dollars in infrastructure improvements that'll be going to Ward Five for years to come. So everyone has a lot to be thankful for you taking the time to serve and give to our city this way, so I just appreciate you so much, and I'm going to miss you as well.
Should I respond now?
Yes, ma'am, sure, turn.
Okay, well, gosh, I didn't expect Stephen to be the one to make me cry, so. I didn't want to step down right now, and this pandemic just created a situation, you know, that I couldn't recover from, so I actually wrote this down because I knew I'd get emotional. I worked really hard to get in this seat, and I've taken it very seriously. It's funny that when I talked to Stephen Tyler Holman one time about possibly getting the appointment, I, he said, I think you're mature enough, and I remember thinking, hmm, I don't know if that's true or not. So, and I, and I think of that often, sometimes when I say some of the things I say, but anyways, I want to thank my colleagues, and I was going to do this on the end, but I think this is a good time for it, so I thank you all for putting up with me. I know a lot of times, my go-to thing is to, to pull a joke out when it's uncomfortable, so, or when things are too tense, so that's been a lot in the last three years, so I'm sad to have to step down, and I sort of am relieved a little bit just because the pressure the last few months has been intense. You know, our businesses have had all kinds of good things and bad things, and, and, and so I haven't had a paycheck necessarily since April, and my house hasn't had a house payment since then, so, so we're moving down in house, so this is not me pulling a political stunt or anything like that, this is, this is real life, I'm a human, all these people that sit here with me are humans that have all the same things that the rest of the city is going through, we also are going through those. So I, I am a live-out-loud kind of person, so I will, I will tell you my business, and that's what I've done. So my business is that I've bought a 100-year-old house in Ward Four that I am not going to bulldoze, and I actually went last Saturday to pull a bathtub out of a house that probably will be bulldozed, so I can put that in my house that won't be bulldozed. So fellow council members, thank you for your service, for all that you do. The general public doesn't see how the sausage is made, I promise you. We do all of the meeting stuff here, but there are hours and hours of reading material that is sometimes frankly very, very boring and technical and way outside my comfort zone, and I know that we all come from different backgrounds, and we have to be the experts kind of on highways and policing, racial justice, hot holes, stop signs, stripes, buildings, water conservation, it's crazy, and it's a lot, and new council members, it's, this is the tip of the iceberg, and I, the one thing I, I will just, I'm not going to read all this crap that I wrote down, the one thing I will leave you with is, I learned right away when I got on council that there is not one person that has, has been on council with me that had some sort of evil intention. Everybody is here trying to do what they think is right, you know, and, and trying to do what they think is right for our community, so I appreciate the, those, those long nights, those 12-hour nights, I mean, who sets through a 12-hour meeting? That's crazy. So for 50 bucks, you know, it's because you care, and I, I've, I appreciate that, and I respect every one of you, so thank you so much for everything that you've put up with, with me. I know that I bring controversy sometimes, and that I say things like big basketball Jesus and chainsaw weddings, and not everybody gets me, but there was an axe-throwing thing, so I'm, I feel vindicated there, and I will not be going away. Councilmember Hall, you better behave yourself. So, thank you all.
And with that, without any further ado, the resolution. A resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, extending appreciation to Sarita Wilson for serving as Ward Five council member in Norman, Oklahoma. Whereas the health and well-being of the democratic society depends on the active participation of citizens in the affairs of the government, and whereas the level of government, which is closest to the people, is that of city government, whereas those individuals who seek to run for public office at the municipal level do so out of deep caring and concern for the future of their community, and they bring their own unique talents, values, and abilities to the job. And whereas those individuals who are elected take on the responsibility to establish public policy and to meet the challenge of complex issues and problems to the best of their abilities, and whereas these public officials assume a demanding task to establish an understanding of the issues, and they do so in addition to work and family responsibilities and demands. And whereas Sarita Wilson served on the city council representing Ward Five from July 4, 2017 until August 11, 2020, and whereas Sarita is a strong advocate and proponent for animal rights and a loyal supporter of the Animal Welfare Center, championing several fund- And whereas Sarita is a strong advocate and proponent for animal rights and a loyal supporter of the Animal Welfare Center, championing several fundraiser events for the center. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, that the Council of the City of Norman, on behalf of the entire citizenry of Norman, commend and extend appreciation to Sarita Wilson for her service to this community as council member for Ward Five and wish her well in her future endeavors. Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. I think everyone's comments tonight were, you will be greatly missed. But with that, we go to our final item of the evening, which is miscellaneous discussion. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Remarks should be directed to council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less.
We have one email that came in and from Lori from Ward Six and it's regarding the Ward Five Selection Committee. She states, explain how two people who are listed on the selection committee for Ward Five are not even residents of the City of Norman, one of Noble and one of Newhalla, as stated in tax records. I think the people making selection of candidates for the ward seat should be from Ward Five. I will just make comments related to that. All five of those people are members of Ward Five. While they may have a mailing address and of Noble or Newhalla, they are still within our city limits. It's not uncommon to have a mailing address or Noble and Newhalla and I think that may be the only two, but could be even one other's community around that still fall within our city limits. So just to clarify that, they are all five Ward Five citizens.
Thank you for that clarification, Madam Clerk. Are there any other miscellaneous discussion comments for the evening?
There is one from the YouTube page, Mayor, from Josh Sylvester, love and appreciation for Councilwoman Wilson as well as for all of you from Ward Three.
Any other comments?
We have one from here in the room with us. Give us a moment to get him set up.
While he is getting set up, I will take advantage of this moment and ask everyone to look forward and smile because I would like to get a shot of Councilmember Wilson's last meeting. All right, one, two, three.
We do have a question from the YouTube. I believe it's in regards to an earlier discussion from William Buck. Is there any particular oversight on how these funds are spent? Or are there rules and regulations regarding how they can be spent? I think it's related to seizure funds.
Is there a way to send an email or something since we're past that item?
Absolutely.
We can ask for his email on here.
Okay.
We'll see.
Because I don't know if the chief is still on. That's the issue.
And we can probably give them the specific code sections to, you know, give them all of it. Easier to put in writing, I think, than potentially to, to state.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Turning it over to the public comments. Sir, you have the floor. Be sure to unmute yourself before you speak.
There we go. When all else fails, get the technical.
My name is Rick Peskron. I'm a Norman resident. I live in Ward Six. And this is a question for Mayor Clark, you and all council members. I have a copy of a picture of the tents that were at Center Fashion Mall on Main Street on Sunday. And in that picture is, is, is a Antifa flag. And I need to know if any of you council people or Mayor Clark are supportive of Antifa. Simple yes or no question. I have a couple of other items, but I'd like to address this one first.
We can't answer you.
Why not?
We don't ordinarily respond to the, the discussions. It's just for us to take your comments, but you're welcome to email all of us.
Well, I mean, Antifa is a domestic organization as defined by the U.S. Attorney General. Their flag to be here that means somebody, and I'm not, I don't know who, okay? Somebody has to support it to put the flag there. And my question is, are you aware of that? Let me rephrase my question. Are you aware that there was an Antifa flag Saturday and/or Sunday?
I'll state again that we're, we're not really answering questions right now, but we'd be happy to answer your emails.
Well, okay, that proposes some issues. Now, Mayor Clark, this is more to you probably than anybody else because I've, I've read it. Are you suggesting a proposal for 16-year-olds to vote in elections in Norman, Oklahoma?
Sir, once again, we're, we're not answering questions right now, but if you put all of these in an email to me, I would be happy to answer them.
Okay, this lady has to be on the agenda.
Right. In order for them to talk about it. That's why it's just to receive comments only. In order for them to actually have a discussion with you, that item would have had to have been on the agenda. But I'm sure they're happy to address your emails.
Okay. Well, now that I understand that, I will put those in an email. So.
Thank you. And my apologies for that.
Well, no, I, I wasn't aware. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have asked him if I was aware of sending an email so it could get on the agenda. That's all.
We're just looking at you with blank faces. I appreciate you coming to City Hall.
And you do it very well.
We will wait for your emails.
I have that look too.
Thank you very much. Now is an opportunity for council members to make comments. Let's start with Ward One.
So, I mean, I guess maybe it's partly an answer to that question. We will be hearing a presentation on Thursday in the City Council Oversight Committee from Eagle Scout Elliot Metz, who is the leader of the local Vote 16 movement. We'll be hearing the presentation from him and we will be getting feedback, I assume, from our city attorney about what, if any, and from what I understand, not many options we have in that area. We will also be continuing discussion of public participation as we look to develop a plan for the reserve funds that we have. And we'll be generating some ideas about how in a pandemic, we are supposed to be figuring out ways to get some public feedback on what a program should look like, what it should cover. That will be the Thursday, 10:00 PM. It will be on YouTube, live stream. Feel free. I will, because we have an item on that agenda that is a new topic to the Oversight Committee, Vote 16. I will be taking public comment on that topic for that meeting. It is my policy that when the first time an item hits the Oversight Committee, that there is public comment. So you can email comments to cityclerk@normanok.gov. They will also be monitoring the YouTube page for comments on the YouTube feed. And that is this Thursday. So have a great week, everyone. That's all I've got. Sarita Wilson, I'll see you around.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Perry.
I would like to say once again to Sarita, thank you for your service. And I assure you, I will be eating pizza in your honor many days to come. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Patron.
Okay, so a few announcements. On August 19th at 6:30, Wards Two and Three will be having a meeting in Westwood Park regarding the upcoming bond. City staff will do a presentation and members of the community in our wards can ask questions. The other wards have paired-up meeting dates as well. So I I don't have those in front of me because I don't live in those wards, but maybe City Clerk can give those out. And what parks, but please mask up while you're there. And then also there are some virtual meetings that City Hall will be putting on. There was one yesterday and you can re-watch that one on the city's Facebook page. And then the two upcoming ones are August 20th at 11:00 AM and August 24th at 2:00 PM. You can submit questions beforehand. And is Annalise still with us? What email is?
That's social@normanok.gov. And we did move in order to accommodate the people that might have regular working hours, we moved the one on the 20th to noon. So people can join at lunch.
Okay, so the one at noon is at lunch and you said social@normanok.gov?
Yes.
Okay. And can you tell them that other ward park, the park tour dates, maybe on somebody else when they go, if you want to pull them in a minute?
Yeah, I'll pull them up and send them to the mayor.
So I'm sure that you can also get all this information on the city website, but I've had seen conversations and people still have questions. And so make sure you submit those beforehand if you want them answered during the virtual meeting or go to your Ward Park Tour. And then obviously vote on August the 25th or beforehand if you have absentee ballots or if you want to early vote. But anyway, don't let somebody else make these decisions for you. You should do that yourself. Sarita, this is still just, I'm still just a little flustered with this one, but I guess first, I really just want to say thank you. And I don't think I said that the last time. So you answered so many of my questions when I was trying to get my sea legs underneath me. And to be real honest, I'm not sure that you ever fully get them. I, I think this is a huge operation that the city undertakes and staff is amazing, but we still have certain responsibilities as council members and we lean on one another quite a bit. And even when we don't necessarily always vote the same, this is a cordial council and I'm really appreciative to all my colleagues and Sarita, I'm going to miss you. On that note, I was thinking that this is actually the fifth departure from the dais in my 13 months. So anybody who thinks that you know, you're somehow stuck with the same council members for life, there's a lot of turnover on council. And the reason why is because it's a hard job. Minimum of around, I'd say 30 hours a week minimum. Meetings commonly go to 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM. So, I mean, and we're getting out of here and it's still daylight. That's crazy. It's awesome. But I mean, it's crazy. So and it's volunteer. That, that $50 that you talked about for the 12 hours, that's actually for the month. That's not one meeting. People are here and they do it and they don't necessarily agree on every issue, but they do it because they love the city. So you're not stuck with somebody forever. Just know that. There's going to be turnover and it's a service to the community. So I would just encourage all of us to have grace. Because it is a hard job and it's largely thankless job. Although sometimes people are very thankful at the same time. Just depends that I'm thankful for each and every one of you. And all you guys at home too. I was looking at your faces here, my colleagues and staff, but I'm definitely grateful for everybody that's watching as well. And I would just really encourage everybody to remember that we're a community and this isn't Washington DC. The issues that you see want to know if something that's happening in some other faraway state is how a council member here feels. Those huge issues are, we're busy with city stuff. I mean, it's, this is, we're not running for Congress. This is we don't have bodyguards. We don't have some huge expense account. We have an account of zero. This, we're just normal people with normal families and we love our city, just like you do, even if we have differences of opinion. And one major thing that we have in common is that we love Norman and we want what's best for Norman and we want to be a city that you can thrive and that there's opportunity. This is a warm and wonderful place to live. And I just really implore all of us to dig deep and remember that we are, at the end of the day, all neighbors and we won't be serving on council forever. And one day you might be serving on council. And I will be the first one to say that we should extend respect to you, whether I agree with you or not, because I know that you're working hard. And sometimes there aren't easy answers. Policy should be something that you listen to the public and you deliberate and we, we do the best that we can. And anyway, I'm just grateful for you guys. I got off my soapbox, but please vote on the 25th.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Hall.
Yes, we do all love Norman and I think we all want what's best for Norman. So thank you, Councilmember Patron, for being so eloquent about that. And I also want to talk about the Ward One and Ward Four opportunity that we have tomorrow night at Andrews Park. So Councilmember Beerman and myself will be present along with city staff to talk about the Go Bonds and the election on the 25th at 6:30, Andrews Park. I'm really looking forward to seeing as many of you as are comfortable coming out to see your faces and looking forward to the conversation. The other thing I wanted to mention, because it, it did come up today, is we still are participating in debris pickup from our severe storm that we had a while back and the contractors that are helping us with that pickup are working their way through Ward Four and I think making other passes through the rest of the community. But I did want to let you know that that work continues and that there is a lot of attention now and focus in Ward Four. So be patient. They will get to you. And I appreciate the fact that we've been able to do that for everyone. The other thing I wanted to mention, Councilmember Beerman announced the Oversight Committee meeting that is this coming Thursday at 4:00, that you're welcome to watch. And, and I really have to talk a little bit about Elliot Metz, who is Ward Four resident. He's 17 years old and he is the young man who has done all of the work and research on a topic that many of you are now thinking about, and that is the Vote 16 movement. And I have been working with Elliot since March. So when we all look back about how we spent our time sheltering in place and distance learning and dealing with the challenges of how you get along day to day in a pandemic. Elliot chose to spend his time on grassroots advocacy and learning what that's all about and what it takes. And he was inspired to look into this topic because of a conference that he was able to, to attend right before most of those things came to a full stop. So it has really been my pleasure to help him understand the process of bringing something before our city council. And he's had to certainly learn patience on how the process works and how we begin to discuss a topic that may get the attention of the entire council and very likely the attention of our community of Norman. But he has been so inspiring to me personally of the time and the care that he's taken to really look into this. And he's reached out to communities all across the United States. I would recommend to all of you to take a look at Generation Citizen, where this has come from. The part that I love about even entertaining the idea of having younger voters participate in the electoral process is the link that would be taking place in our high schools to reinvigorate civics and learning what it means to be a good citizen and learning about what the responsibility and the privilege that we all have to exercise our right to vote. So I encourage you all to take a listen to his presentation. If you can't do it live on Thursday, it will be recorded and be available for you to take a look at. He's an engaging, energetic, inspiring young man and I could not be more proud to represent him on city council. So I'm looking forward to a robust conversation on Thursday. So I'm looking forward to a robust conversation on Thursday and reminding us all of what, what the responsibility that we all have to be engaged in our government and that we can make the most difference in our local government. So thank you, Elliot, for inviting me to be part of your journey, and I'm really looking forward to your presentation on Thursday. And thank you all at home for participating. And again, Serita Wilson, you have been such a wonderful guide for me personally as I joined council. And I appreciate all of your advice and care and kindness. And I really look forward to working with you on Ward 4 issues. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wilson.
I say that Councilmember Hall and I can tag team, and I look forward to being part of the Midway Mafia. But I also, in my, in my, in my earlier comments, I forgot to thank a lot of people. And I really want to send a big thank you to city staff, because holy heck, they put up with a lot. And I think, I think, oh, I get to quit. And they're still here having to do it all. So thank you, guys, for caring for our city and our citizens and just trying to do the very best job and for helping us, helping me as I got into my council role. And even before I got on council, when I was just that kind of, I don't know, how old was I back then? 47-year-old kid hanging out around the council, because I didn't have anything else to do, trying to learn what I needed to learn. So thank you, guys, for being patient with me, especially Mr. Francisco and Brenda. But I wasn't saying something. Also, I am sorry that I'm leaving you guys with a hole to fill and extra work at this time, whenever this is a crazy time. I really am sorry about that. That's kind of my biggest sadness, that and leaving my work undone in the ward, because there were things I wanted to work on, like I really wanted to get more stop signs, be more aggressive with our stop signs, because we have fatal accidents or opportunities for fatal accidents that we can all see out there. And due to, you know, rules and regulations that are already established, that we can't fix them. But I don't like that word can't. I usually just go around it and ignore it and say, how can we? So I hope the next person really works on that, because that needs to happen out there. That and I thank you for the committee members that have volunteered their time. That's really going to be a thankless job, because it's not without controversy, as we've already seen. I do know all of these county, county, committee members, except two. But I know which ones live on the very fringes, and they're very active in our community, but they do live inside the city limits. I wouldn't, nobody would do that. That's crazy. But and I also want to send out a little message to everyone that there's a reason why we don't carve any of this in stone. And the reason is, in case we get it wrong, we can always change it. So we listen, we adjust, and sometimes we get it wrong, and sometimes we get it really right. And sometimes we deal with stuff that 20 years ago councils got really wrong. So you know, we're all just humans. Again, back to that thing, we're humans doing human stuff. So come to meetings, vote, please, please, please reach out to whoever the new council member is. Ward 5 citizens, reach out to them and talk to them and let them know how you feel. Because that was probably one of my biggest frustrations, was having a meeting every month with six people show up or 10 people show up and, and then get hammered for not doing things that the ward wanted. So please talk to them, and please email, and please call, and please meet with them whenever things get back to normal. And then last thing, vote. We have a bond election coming up. We are not sneaking any of these things through. We've talked about it all the time. It's a bond election coming up. There's some charter things coming up. There's going to be who knows what else coming up. I won't even say the words out loud, but there are some other things coming up. And then in February, you get to vote for council members again. So do it. Go vote. Be registered to vote. Hey, November's got a big thing too. Might want to vote then. So I love you all. I will see you in the funny papers. And I will be hanging out in Ward 4, just like, I'm going to get me a tide-dyed t-shirt and hang out at Midway. Love y'all.
What a lovely note to say goodbye on, Councilmember. Thank you very much for all that. Councilmember Foreman.
Well, Serita, that's a tough act to follow, and I'm sorry I never got to sit next to you on the dais, but maybe one day.
You would have liked the jokes.
We, Councilmember Peacock and I did the Sutton Wilderness cleanup on Saturday. We had a really great group of about 40 to 50 people, and we picked up a lot of trash. That was really great. Councilmember Peacock and I also have our park tour on August 13th at 6:30 PM at Griffin Community Park. So for your masks, social distance, let's get our questions answered. And then I'm looking forward to our retreats. This will be, you know, my first retreat. And so I'm looking forward to setting goals. You know, I've talked to a lot of my constituents and things that we look forward to trying to accomplish. I mean, I know right now is a really odd year, but I look forward to that and meeting with everyone and trying to carry, carry this thing through. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. Couple things. So the Ward 7 slash Ward 5 meeting will be at Reeves Park on the 20th at 6:30. Hopefully, it's pretty good weather, and we can hang out outside. Reeves Park is one of the projects in Norman Forward and has been a potential location for the senior center, which is currently, again, Reeves Park is currently city-owned property. So that's been a strong contender for that. So we've had a couple ward meetings there before, and it's a good opportunity. If anybody wants to come out, I'll be there for a couple hours. We'll be talking just about what exactly we're voting on, each of the four proposals. What is the history of these projects? Why are we asking for this now instead of waiting? Why wasn't it done before? So a lot of very good questions that people may have before they're ready to cast a vote on this. And I do just really want to encourage, as my colleagues have encouraged people, to really take some time and try to understand what, what is going on and cast a vote. That is the most important thing. We want more people to vote in local elections. I've been saying that as long as I've been on council, and every council member I've served with has echoed that same thing at one point or the other. We want and need more people to vote in local elections and care about this type of stuff. This is why I like voting in local elections and serving local government so much, is that we get to have a direct say in how funding is spent in our community, how, who the elected representatives are, all that type of stuff. And we can be directly involved, kind of unlike the state and federal government, in my opinion. So it's really important, and I'm looking forward to seeing anybody that wants to come out to the park. I'm not sure who might come from Ward 5 to be a representative. Maybe some of the committee members might be willing to come and, and hang out for a while. But anybody's invited, even if you don't live in Ward 5 or 7. So if that's just your free night off, then come on over and we'll talk about it. I'm also available pretty much throughout the week at the Friendly Market from 10 to 5:00 Monday through Friday. And I close the store on Wednesdays from 3:30 to 9:00. So if you have some time in the evening and want to stop by, I'm there, be more than happy to talk to you about what's going on. My shifts at the deli have been pretty limited lately, so it's hard to catch me at the door for late-night sessions right now. But hopefully, I can get back to that someday in the not-too-distant future. But I'm looking forward to that. I do want to comment about 16-year-olds. Growing up in Norman, my first job, I've commented about it on social media. My first job at 16 in high school at Norman High was working at Perfect Swing, the abandoned amusement park in Norman that everybody is very well aware of. I ran go-karts, bumper boats, everything you can think of there. And I paid, I worked every Saturday and Sunday. I worked weeknights, sometimes after track and/or football practice until close. And I definitely paid income tax to the state and was, you know, making my own income and spending it at stores in Norman. My very first paycheck from Perfect Swing, I went out and bought a Playstation 2. So it might have been the most expensive thing I had ever spent money on at that point in my life. So so I think there's, and the city of Norman is completely, at least operational-wise, funded by sales tax revenue. So there's a pretty good legal argument for just there on why we need to take the time and hear Elliot out. He's taking the time to research this subject. He cares about it. He's way far ahead of where I was when I was his age, as far as caring about policy and how important it is to get involved at an early age, even if it's just to get the idea into a teenager's head that, hey, there's a lot of big decisions that you'll get to be a part of making in just a few years, and here's why you need to start preparing now. So I really appreciate the work he's done, and I'm looking forward to hearing, hearing his presentation. One other thing is just, just since last July, a year ago, Councilmember Wilson's replacement will make the sixth, the new council member we've had in just a year and will be the 25th, I think 25th council member I've served with overall in seven years. So very correct. The turnover is very high. We've, we've had more than two or three years is not common for a number of reasons. The pay, the terms, the owning your own business, or having a family. All sorts of reasons can make it very difficult to sit around for hours and hours and try to come up with good policy decisions and listen to the public tell you what they think about it too. So I just really appreciate all of you that are here, serving now, that have served before, and those of you that are interested in serving in the future. So thank you. I look forward to next week.
Thank you, Councilmember. We're getting to the point where you're unable to keep track of how many people you've served with. I thought you were going to stumble there for a minute. Oh, sorry. All right. Small human. We've all got them. Councilmember Peacock.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, kind of repeat what everybody else has said on that and emphasize the importance of getting out there and voting. You know, regardless of what your position is, just get out there, get engaged, make yourself heard. You know, Serita, you know, I, I'll just echo all the sentiments of all my colleagues. I couldn't have said it any better. You know, I regret that we didn't get the opportunity to work together as much up here on council. But you know, I'm excited to see what you do next, and definitely wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll add just a few things. I will go ahead and repeat those dates, because we're all talking about different park tours, for those that are still watching. Thursday, August 20th, for the online ones, at noon on the City of Norman Facebook page. Monday, August 24th at 2:00 PM, if you're still on the fence before Election Day on August 25th, also on the City of Norman Facebook page. And for the park tours, we have, again, Wednesday, August 12th at 6:30 PM at Andrews Park. Thursday, August 13th at 6:30 PM at Griffin Park. Wednesday, August 19th at 6:30 PM at Westwood Park. And Thursday, August 20th at 6:30 PM at Reeves Park. And that's a lot of dates, but that's not even half of the meetings that we've had scheduled, reaching out to individual groups. So I want to make sure I take a moment and say thank you to staff, having really, you know, took lead on the transportation bond. I fully understand how much work and all the meetings there are, and I haven't been able to participate as much this go-around. So I really participate, appreciate. City Manager Pyle, I've seen your presentations virtual, and, and I think we're going to continue to fight over cheerleader-in-chief for the city of Norman. You do an amazing job.
A labor of love, Your Honor. Thank you.
And I also want to mention the Vote 16 project. I'm not quite sure why Elliot's hard work keeps getting attributed to me, but I am incredibly impressed with him. And the fun part was, he had such great research. He was able to tell me other cities that had pulled it off and done it well. And I happen to know the mayor of one of those cities, so we scheduled a call and had a great chat. And she had wonderful insight on how that works. But I do want to remind Norman residents to be open-minded, but the final vote to this would come to you. It is a charter amendment. So before you discount 16-year-olds, because of whatever stereotypes you have or reflections of maybe your own youth, this kid is impressive, and he's worth hearing out. So again, I encourage you to have an open mind with that, and I really appreciate Councilmember Beerman for giving him the stage. If anything, we need to continue to encourage young people to engage regardless of the outcome. So I was happy to entertain it, and, and again, hear him out. He's done well. And he was also my first Instagram Live, so he's like officially a record with Mayor Clark. The other thing I want to mention is, oh, I said FB, like Facebook. Let me talk you off Facebook. FB also stands for football. I don't know if you've all been having your phones blow up the way mine has over the last few minutes, but it would appear that the Big 12 has decided to move forward with the 2020 season. So I want you all to know that we've already been in meetings, planning for a, as safe as the season as we possibly can, because as I'm sure you're aware, we don't have a say in whether there's a football season. And if they have a reduced capacity inside or reduced tailgating, guess where the overflow is going to go. But we're already having the conversations. We have some fantastic ideas on how to spread out tailgating and to do it safely. And honestly, I'm encouraged for the city to have something to get behind. We are not united right now. We are quite the opposite, and we can do better. Frankly, we deserve better. And so if football will be the thing that will make that happen, I will do everything I can to make sure it's as safe experience as possible going forward. So we're, we're working on it. That's what I'm going to say. We're not going to be caught off guard on this. It won't be a scramble before the first home game to figure out how we're going to do this, so please rest assured with that. And with that, one more thank you to Councilmember Wilson. I did have the honor to get to sit next to you, and sorry, Councilwoman Foreman, she's a hoot. You really missed out. But it's been great, and this isn't goodbye. This is just, I'll see you at Midway. So with that, this meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.